Couple days down on the beach.
Yeah.
Sir.
Y'all up?
No, I might leave early on Monday. And I don't have to, but if I can, I would like to.
Hey, y'all going to that nice for dead prayer for a break? Well, I got one written. I need out of there by eleven thirty. Yeah. Two seconds. Things all over. Yeah. Yeah.
It's just automatic. First Monday of every month.
Y'all are up?
All right, Steve, you're on, man.
All right, welcome to our May second planning commission and meeting. Going to call this planning commission meeting to order and my Greg, would you say?
Let's, uh, let's join together, Greg, Father. It's a, it's a privilege indeed to stand before you, Lord, to invoke your presence in this place and thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you have provided to us in this community. Father, thank you for the weather that we're enjoying and I pray, Father, that you will help all of our first responders, that you'll help those, Lord, who keep us safe, that they would be safe themselves, that they'll come home to their families, Lord, after they serve us so diligently today. I pray, Father, with wisdom for these men, give them what they need today so that they can make good and wise decisions, decisions, Lord, that are keeping with your will. We pray all this in Jesus' name.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Renee.
Okay, so.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good.
For about minutes.
So, the minutes.
Make motion approve.
Yep, ma- listen, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Our minutes, all right. Got a motion by Jared, second, by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then it's passed. Uh, let's see.
All business, we had an item that was continued from the last meeting. Bradley Morris Fleetway conditional use permit at forty-one thirty-six Highway four seventy-one. Mr. Morris is here today, if y'all have any questions, but he was going to get some revised renderings more in line with what the community was wanting to see out there. He was proposing a country store type of setting. He hasn't obtained those yet, he's working on them, and he's also initiated a traffic study. He hopes to have all that information back to us on the, by the May thirtieth meeting, if y'all are, would like to reschedule that, or if you wouldn't mind rescheduling that to the May thirtieth meeting, continuing it.
I think that's a great idea, and I applaud Mr. Morris also for taking the extra steps and doing these things to try to make it as conducive as possible as it can, because I know that people out there, along with myself, are eager to see it and figure out what's going on, so should be good. I'm good on putting, I didn't make a motion to put that off to the thirtieth.
Continue to the May thirtieth meeting.
The traffic study, was that initiated, they asked you to do that? Did M-Dot?
It was one of the concerns that the, uh, some of the residents voiced, and I just thought, I'd go ahead and do it.
He's taking it upon himself to do it.
But if it comes back and it shows it needs a red light?
Uh, that has been determined, yeah. Just been facilitated for the study. I'm not aware of that.
I see where you're going.
Yeah, because, I mean, we, we had another vendor, gentleman won't open the store, did a traffic study, and M-Dot came back and said, "Yep, it needs one." You know, so, but I didn't know if you were ready to put a red light up out there or not.
I haven't been told that. Was this a one done last?
Four sixty-eight. One at five?
Yeah, four sixty-eight, four sixty-nine, Mr. Slay and I went over there and it needed a red light.
Not in your area.
And, no, yeah, this is down, this is down in my area, down southwest part of the county.
Different scenario, but, yeah.
And we, and we got, we got the highway department to agree that there was a need for a red light there, but that they should pay for it, they should pay for all the improvements, and they just said, "We didn't have any money." We all agreed, "That's okay, you didn't have any money," but they agreed to do it next couple of years, put it on their list of things to do, and I got the permit for the, we got the permit for the developer, and with some stipulations on his side of the things, he couldn't do down the road as well, far as expanding and making it worse, so, but, the, the M-Dots is recip- is, will, is received, you know, if it was a big Kroger development, different story, but with that, you know, similar situation.
Yeah, that, um, that may come up in the, in the conclusion.
It, it will come up when they get ready to act, when you get ready to ask for that curb cut to the highway, they're going to ask, they're gonna go, "Okay, this needs a, a traffic study." I think that's what kind of happened to ours, and, and, and that's where it ended up, so, yeah.
I've initiated that ahead of time. I'm going to get it. I'm going to get the study done.
So, just to make it clear on the record, we, we are in the process of.
You're right, I'm sorry.
All of that worked out.
Yeah, MOU has not been signed yet.
There's documentation that has to be executed, so.
By the time, by the time they get through doing all that, it'll be just cheaper to go ahead and just do it, instead of paying Slay and their attorneys and nobody else to, to work it out, but.
All right, so, Slay, do I need any kind of action on this to put it off to the thirtieth?
If you will, Daniel, just make a motion to delay the consideration of this until May third.
Okay.
So, weren't the residents planning on coming back and all that?
Well, I think Mr. Morris has talked to several of the ones that are impinging on those spots. So, I mean, I think they've, they've kind of, she's, the lady that lives directly behind them, it's kind of in that subdivision area, she's spreading the word along with the folks across the street, so he's in contact with those on the same point, so.
I'd like to have her to let her know about this not to be at this meeting.
Yeah, have you, have you made any additional suggestions to her as what you would do for her as far as separating?
Yes, I'm working on a buffer on my plan to, so I'm doing a traffic study, I'm working on the renderings for the show by the store look, and I'm trying to work out a buffers out.
Yeah, 'cause she is like literally your next door neighbor, the back to her house is there.
Right. Well, I'm trying to address the three concerns that I, that were brought up, was the traffic, the buffer, and how it looks.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm addressing all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, I'll make that motion to, I guess, continue it to the thirtieth.
All right, we have a ma- a motion to continue this to the thirtieth, May thirtieth, the second, uh, made by Daniel, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, to move it to the thirtieth. All right, Ms. Renee.
All right, the next item is a dimensional variance for Vernon McFarland at sixteen eighty-one Highway four seventy-one. This property is located on the west side of Highway four seventy-one. Y'all will remember probably that Mr. McFarland had applied for a conditional use permit to operate a daycare on this property. He had a site plan and architectural review for construction of a two thousand square foot metal building, and it was approved on August the thirtieth of eighteen, contingent upon brick on the front and sides, and approval of his grading and drainage plan. It's a three point two eight, three point two oh acre parcel that's on C two, that's an aerial view, there's an existing home on the property that's going to be used in conjunction with the daycare as well. The grading and drainage plan, there were some issues with that, and so he had to reconfigure how the building, the new building would sit on the property. The original site plan that was approved had the parking area between the two buildings. Well, because of the changes on the drainage plan, he had to reconfigure and put the buildings side by side. The ordinance says that you can't have detached buildings on the same lot closer than thirty feet, and so at the closest point here on the front, he's only eighteen feet away from the building, so he's asking for a twelve foot variance from that required thirty feet.
Yeah, and I'll make one comment on that, Mr. McFarland's been extremely cooperative with everything we've asked, and we've asked, had some requirements on the building and stuff like that, so we appreciate that, so, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, we're just set in the hearing.
We're set to hearing, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion to set this hearing, uh, Daniel, second, by Jay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. McFarland, I appreciate you.
Next is a conditional use permit for William DeVore Jr. at three thirty Botler Road. This property is located on the east side of Botler Road, it's Lot thirteen of Cotton Row subdivision. Mr. DeVore is seeking the conditional use permit to convert an existing workshop into a home for his parents. They've gotten on up in age, and they live in Missouri, and he needs to move them closer to where he is. It's a four point nine five acre parcel, it's zoned RE one, that's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan, this is the house on that property, and that's the existing storage building. He's going to extend the building twenty-three feet and create a one thousand five hundred ninety square foot residence for his parents. That's a view of that existing shop. It has a metal exterior, and he's proposing a metal exterior for the addition as well. Since all of these hearings are going to be set for the fifteenth, we've posted all these properties, we have gotten a few calls, but nobody's opposed to it. These are views of surrounding properties, this is the house on that property, and then these are the surrounding properties. Mrs. DeVore is here, if y'all have any questions for her.
Ms. Renee, I have a question, I'm looking at the old style, what letter is that?
That is number, um, four B.
It's B.
Four B.
Oh, I guess I skipped over it, I'm sorry. Okay, it's not, that's not a problem, I'm just trying to find it.
Just FYI, you know, do they have deed restrictions out there? She needs to be aware of that, you get some kind of waiver, somebody could come back and haunt her, uh, if there's deed restrictions out there. And it has nothing to do with us, but, you know, but that seems to be, she needs to check that.
We looked at some of that, Craig and I, and I responded, you know, and let him know.
As long as they're aware, you know.
Yeah.
Were there restrictive covenants on this?
Well, you know, there was something that said it had to be a little larger, and you, you suggested I contact him, yeah.
Yes, there are restrictive covenants, but, well, I'd say for sure, I think it was deed restrictions that you alluded to, yeah, and so the minimum square footage was sixteen hundred, and the proposed is fifteen ninety. So, I, we just, just as a mere technical reality, it might be good for them to understand if they can find ten more feet, probably best.
You did, you did measure outside walls, didn't you, when you came up about fifteen?
I'm not sure how they came up with fifteen ninety.
That's what they put on their application.
Technically, that is the correct way to do it, outside walls.
Yeah, so how big, how big is this lot? How big is this lot?
Four point, this one is actually a four point nine five acre lot, the other lots in there said they couldn't have a second dwelling, this was the only lot that it said could have a second dwelling, and so.
It's, it's not in violation of the deed restrictions with the exception of the technical ten foot short from the minimum square footage.
This is the actual property right here. And it's four point nine five acres.
Both of those, what is, one a barn and the other the house?
Well, that's the house, and then they have the existing, this is the.
The backup, you said, which one is their property?
This one, yeah, this one.
So, what's to the left right there?
That's the neighbor.
That's your neighbor's house?
That's the neighbor's house.
The one to the left.
This is the house?
That's the neighbor's.
Yeah, that's the thought.
Okay.
This is the DeVores house, that's the neighbor, and then this little building sits in the back.
You can't see it from the front.
The driveway drives straight into it. Uh, yeah, there you go, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
You look at that barn on the other side over there.
Yeah, it looks like somebody has a barn.
I think he's even said that they wouldn't, they do something, it wouldn't be around and all that kind of thing.
I'll make a motion to set the, a public hearing.
Second.
All right.
For clarity, we don't regulate restrictive covenants or deed restrictions, we look for them, we try to help folks not walk themselves into a lawsuit, if we can help them avoid it, so my suggestion would be find ten more square feet.
You're on the safe side.
All right, we have a motion by Bob Morrow, second by Jared to set this, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for M&amp;F Construction LLC on Highway four seventy-one. This property is located on the west side of Highway four seventy-one. They're seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres of a sixty-two acre parcel. The property is zoned RE one, that's an aerial view of that property, it's currently, timber's being cut on the property right now. They show the subject property here and the access point to four seventy-one. This shows the actual four acre portion that will be mined, and then this is the actual hill that will be cut down, they put in their application that it would lessen the elevation changes and allow them to sell suitable fill material for construction projects in the area. They estimate that the mining operation would last for two to three years, and their proposed hours are Monday through Saturday, seven AM to four PM. They have applied to DEQ for their four acre exempt permit, and we have posted it already, we have received a couple of calls on this one, and they are opposed to it.
All right, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing on the fifteenth.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Daniel to set the public hearing, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, next is a rezoning request by Whitney Morehead, Brian May, and Ryan Humphrey on Highway twenty-five. These people are family, and they are seeking to rezone forty point three oh acres of a one hundred and twenty-three acre parcel. It doesn't front on Highway twenty-five, the property will be accessed via an easement. That shows the property is zoned RE one, I mean, it's zoned A two, and they're seeking a change to RE one. That's an aerial view of that property. That little hatched area is the actual property that they'll be purchasing, and then this survey plat shows those four lots as they've been divided off. The father, Mr. Humphrey, will own two of those parcels, and then his daughter and stepson will own the other two. They each plan to build a home on the property, and the board attorney will pair, will prepare a set of restrictive covenants that say it can't be further subdivided without coming back before the board. That's all we could get from Highway twenty-five, we couldn't get to the property, so those are just views of where it, where it's behind there. We, I could have sent Dwayne back in there with a camera, I guess.
Is it drawn over there, you know?
Renee, from.
Whoever took that picture standing in Scott County, Scott County there, I think. Is that car up there? In that, in that long time?
That's what we, that's what I was gonna ask, that's what we looked at with the, okay.
It's one bridge away from God County.
It's not far.
It's up there.
What did they decide about their driveway? Remember, that was an issue, which, I mean, that was, that's a side issue, but, do you remember?
I, I don't remember, uh, I, I know there was a lot of discussion about how they were going to access those parcels.
Yeah.
And the last, the last I understood was that they had two options, one was a good option, one was a bad option, so.
Yeah.
We left it with them to tell us which option they were going to go with, and I, I told them, whatever legal descriptions I got needed to reflect where the easement access to property is going to be. So, I'll be honest with you, Steve, I'm not sure that I've gotten the legals and plat yet, I don't know.
I think he said he was going to like to make sure the zoning was approved, and if it was, then he would proceed and get his ass.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think that was.
The way we left it with them was, I can't do the restrictive covenant part of this until they have determined where the access road is going to be.
All right. All right, well, I'll make a motion to reset this.
Second.
All right, I make a motion, we set it, and Jay seconds it, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Next item is a conditional use permit for Derek Weeks at two oh two Bridges Road. Bridges is off of Rankin Road, this property is at the end of the portion that's county maintained, he'll also access his property via an easement. This is a twenty-six point six oh acre parcel that's zoned RE one, and he's seeking the conditional use permit to construct a thirty-two hundred square foot metal building house. RE one doesn't allow for the metal exterior, that's an aerial view of the property, this is his site plan. He shows the easement down here, driveway, his house will be here, and he shows a carport here, detached carport. These are the elevations of the home, this is the front elevation, and this is the rear, and then these are those side elevations. This is the detached carport, and this is a view of that entrance going into his property. The home won't be visible, and there's nothing else on Bridges Road, he is the only thing down there.
That, did he give us a render of whatever, the outside, how it was going to be routed?
Well, he had originally proposed a run of brick at the bottom, but he's changed his mind, it's going to be all, all exterior. He's here today, if you have, if you have a question for him.
We were going to go with two ton cover, three foot up on the bottom.
I, I, I remember seeing that after she reminded me. All right, uh, I'll make a motion that we set this public hearing.
Second.
All right, I made the motion, Daniel second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next is a rezoning request by Jerry McDaniel and Central Electric Power Association out on Highway four seventy-one. The property is located on the west side of Highway four seventy-one. They filed a joint application to rezone two parcels from R one to C two. You can see here, Mr. McDaniel's parcel, he owns a three point four acre parcel, and Central Electric owns a one point five oh acre parcel. Central also owns the adjoining lot here, it's already zoned C two. That's an aerial view, Mr. McDaniel's property has two existing manufactured homes on it, and this just shows the zoning map, Mr. McDaniel's and Central Electric's is zoned R one, and parcels on the east and west side of Highway four seventy-one going north are zoned C two, that red area is our, is the C two. This is a view of that property, where Mr. McDaniel's property is.
Where are they found, dude?
Mr. McDaniel is rezoning to ask for a conditional use permit for a used car sales business if the rezoning is approved. Central has no immediate plans for their property. So, this is a view of the central lot, and then these are surrounding properties. Now, he's here, if you have questions for Mr. McDaniel. The conditional use part will come up next on our pictures and stuff, and you can see what he's proposing.
Might show all of those other pictures.
That's the one for the.
That's what's around across the street from the lot.
And this is just, this is just up the road from the daycare that was just in here.
Right, right there, yep.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Daniel makes a motion to set this public hearing, Jared seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so if he's appro, if the rezoning, if the zoning change is approved, the conditional use permit for the used car lot, I'm just going to go on through these pictures.
Yeah, hey, here's, here's what I want to do on that, Ms. Renee, if I can, I'd rather have the rezoning hearing first.
It is, it will be.
I mean, and then, but I'm saying, that'd be immediately following the additional one, what I'd rather do is take it one step at a time, we'll see if we can get through the rezoning side of it, and then come back for the conditional use permit on that, is that possible?
It is possible, if that's the way you want to do it, um.
I'd rather just do it in two phases, because I think.
So, you're saying you'd rather do it at another meeting day?
Yeah.
It, 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 it will only be done if the zoning is changed, if it doesn't get changed, it's just.
Correct, so, so I guess my point is, for example, if the rezoning's not changed, then the second one doesn't matter anyway.
That's right, it goes away.
So, what I'd rather do, because I've had a bunch of calls on the same area right here, what I'd rather do is have the rezoning hearing, public hearing, and then decide where we need to go from that spot at that point, what I, what I'd wish to do.
Just to suggest, I just want to get, by the way, on Bradley Morris, just, just move to reset your, uh, for, for the May thirtieth planning commission.
Right.
Your opportunity to set a public hearing for whatever that next June meeting would be on the conditional use permit.
Yeah, I just, I, I just don't.
I have one question.
I just don't want to make it look like, or give the appearance, that we're trying to jam something down too fast, too quick, you know, we'll just do the rezoning, and then we'll come back for the additional variance, is what I want to do, I think publicly, I think that's the right.
You made a statement about he didn't want to do it unless he was going to be approved. Well, I'm not so sure we want to prove another car lot go there, so is he going to want to do another?
No, I'm, I'm saying he couldn't do it unless the zoning change is approved, if it doesn't change to C two, then it just goes away.
So, he wants to change no matter what, then?
Well, he's here, he might want to speak to those questions, um, he is applying for the conditional use, use permit to see if he can be approved for that use before he obtains detailed drawings, but he does have some pictures here of what he would propose that the building would look like. He's proposing construction of a three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot metal building with brick on the sides and what he calls a unique design on the front. He said he would start with approximately fifty vehicles there, but he is here today, so if you have questions for him, he.
I'm gonna go on the record too with Jay, I don't know if we need another car lot in that area up there, I'd be, I'd be very interested to see what the neighbors have to say, uh, I don't, I didn't like the idea we did to begin with, but I wasn't on the board then, but that's a good point.
Yeah, we've already po, we've already posted it, we have had one call, he was not opposed to the actual car lot, he just wanted to make sure that there were no lighting issues where lights would stay on at night and shine in his home, but that's really all he said. He said he, he didn't care about if, if a car lot went there, he was fine with that.
So, what is the deal with Central Electric?
They just joined in because the parcels adjoin each other there, and, you know, we just did them at the same time, to keep, it, it keeps our map uniform there, you wouldn't have just one piece of R one sitting in there.
Does Central Electric, you have a building sitting there?
No.
They just own the property.
That should be a substation?
That's what I, yeah, I think that'd be a substation.
I guess they're planning on.
There'd be no motivation to put a building there.
Yeah, it would have left this piece, R one, just sitting in commercial if, if it were rezoned, so.
I don't even know if you could put a building there.
Their other property is already C two, Central's, and, okay, go ahead.
Is a substation not industrial?
A substation is allowed in any zoning district, subject to the conditional use, so it wouldn't matter if that's what they wanted to do in the future, they could apply for it in any.
Substation for energy up there in your district, didn't we, on Henderson?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, that's been coming though for years, uh, but, I, I mean.
I think Public Service Commission.
So, if it can be approved, why do they want to re, rezone anyway, if it can be approved in any?
It didn't matter what zone it went in, they just joined in with it, and it keeps our map uniform, it helps.
We're all about uniformity here.
Well, okay.
Okay.
We like it, if we can get it.
All right.
All right, so, phrase, how I need that, so, I guess I can go ahead and approve, or vote to set the public hearing on F, which would be done.
Yes.
But then G, I'd like to postpone to the thirtieth of, uh.
Your, your motion would be to reset item G from May thirty, planning commission meeting.
So, then the public hearing would be then set for June fifteen-ish, whatever that is.
On May the thirtieth, you will consider the conditional use permit request, and you will have a, set the hearing.
Would y'all like, well, you can see what he's saying he would like, you know, something similar to this, I just wondered if you, and this is the lot that he owns in Forest and what it looks like. So, just.
You give that plan on that side, we'll step it in phases, I know you like to have it immediately, I know you like to get that done, but.
I feel like we would actually be.
Hey, come, come up and explain it to me, that's all right, sure.
Um, I would think that we would actually be going backwards if we go the route you're talking about, because I wouldn't want to rezone it if I could not get the permit to do this lot, um. See, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, and, and we'll take that route if you'd like, if you'd like to have the, the public hearing on the car lot for the condition, I don't, but I don't know if, if we can do a conditional use.
They're contented upon the zoning, getting a approval, sure, they can't take a approval.
As long as we, as long as we, you know, don't turn it into a commercial.
I didn't know if I could legally do it, because it wouldn't be zoned, we'd be asking for, to do something to an area that wasn't zoned for that. I didn't know if I could legally do it, 'cause it wouldn't be zoned. We'd be asking for, to do something to an area that wasn't zoned for that.
Correct.
So- The rezoning is necessary for the use that is proposed. If that rezoning has to happen, then what Mr. McDaniel is saying, I think that's pretty sure, is saying is that-
You wouldn't wanna rezone it if you can't get the variance out of it, but for that, for that same point, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, do we need to take the zoning stuff first before we can go to the variance on the?
We don't have any choice.
Okay, so, but if, if that's the case and we approve the rezoning to commercial and then for some reason the conditional use doesn't happen for that and you wanna come back and put it back residential, we'll, we'll entertain that.
Sounds great, sounds like it, guys.
I mean, I know it's flipping it back and twice and a bunch of paperwork, but I understand what you're trying to say. I, I don't wanna be a burden to you on that same side.
Right, 'cause if I wanna do-
I just don't wanna do it all at once for the same-
Is it staying here by that CIA and that?
Yes, sir.
It's just down there a little bit.
We got a whole bunch of car lots already over there, man. I don't know if I'm gonna be too G high about putting another one.
Let me, let me give a little, a couple of thoughts that may be helpful in the deliberative process eventually. Demonstrating a public need is one of the elements of rezoning, demonstrating a public need. So, the indication that I'm hearing, and I'm not a decision maker, I'm just giving you guys my opinion of what I'm hearing, is that there's not going to be a demonstration of need for the proposed use at this site. Right, you've already got multiple used car lots within a rocks throw of this site. Is that what I'm hearing? So, there's not a public need for another car lot at this site. There's plenty of options already there. Y'all following that? So, if you can't show a public need for the rezoning, then it wouldn't be necessarily appropriate to rezone the property. If, there would not be a, a requisite showing for you guys to be able to rezone the property. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
So, if we know today that there's not a, unless Mr. McDaniel is able to prove to you guys with all of the facts that would be necessary for that proof to be made, that there is a public need for that use at this site, then you would be able to take that information and make your decision. But at the moment, it doesn't appear that there's going to be enough proof of a demonstrated public need to do this. So, if we know that now, then we may wanna think through whether we want to continue to pursue the rezoning.
Okay.
And spend money on plans.
Yeah, I get it.
Jerry, tell me your thoughts.
Well, I have the biggest buy here, pay here dealership in central Mississippi. Uh, last year, we did about eight million dollars in sales, which is roughly $400,000 in sales tax income.
We don't get any sales tax.
Well, well, I'm just saying, right, it's just- I can put a, an amazing looking dealership there on a piece of property that actually looks horrible right now, and I intentionally bought this property after seeing Pinnacle being able to open up a dealership there. It's just something that I would like to do. I, my, my businesses now are in Forest and I'm wanting to get moved over to this area. I just got married. Live in Brandon now. Um, just something I would like to do, be close to home, would be a nice place.
Why do, why would you wanna locate next to where there's already a lot of competition there?
When you bring in more in one area, people come from all around to an area where there are some. They can shop at multiple dealers in that one area. We have 23 car lots in Forest. People come from all around, believe it or not, to Forest to buy cars, so the more there is, the more people that come.
This area is really more growthy, real, I mean, that, from there east, and there's a lot of traffic on 471, Baker, Highway 25. And I'm just gonna tell you, if one of the others were to leave, I probably would be in favor of it being something else because of the atmosphere right there.
Yes, so, Mr. McDaniel would, would need to be able to establish, and this is just one element, okay, so you got to, gotta, definitely, and I'm not his lawyer, but I'm throwing some information out there for future consideration. The, it would take a lot of data, a lot of facts, to put in front of you guys to demonstrate that the used car market is underserved in that area. That's what needs to be demonstrated. That there is a demand for additional used car vendors, providers in that area right there. That would be, I think, one of the, uh, the strongest elements that would have to be proved in order to justify your decision to rezone the property for that use.
Oh, Mr. McDaniel, just so you know, we're not picking on you. The, the folks that own CIA-
Yes, sir.
They came to us, wanted to buy the building across the, the way from them, well, kinda diagonal, push out for another one.
The fish house.
Okay.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow them to do it.
But there's a car lot there?
No, it's just, that's the one that he's talking about, that's next to it on the corner.
It's a gas station.
There's one, there's one old Baker gas station there?
It used to be an old gas station.
That's not the fish house.
Not the fish house.
The fish house is right beside it.
And she showed the fish house.
But, Mr. McDaniel has that right to pursue.
Yes, absolutely.
Go hire your appraiser, talk to an attorney, demonstrate to the board, you know, that there is a need, there's folks out there to do that, you, you, you know, play that rule. He does have that, that right to do that, you know? Even though we, he may get an inclination today that we're, we're not really warm and fuzzy about it, if he could demonstrate it, he'd engulf it and go to court if he thinks he needs to, if he gonna buy the property and wants to do it. I mean, that's his prerogative.
There's no question that the character of this area has changed over time. That property probably should not be R1, but, and that's just part of the battle. Getting it to C2 takes a demonstration that additional C2 property for a used car. And then you gotta give a conditional use variant, you gotta give a variance off C2 to have outside storage.
Well, no, the, well, to have a car lot, you have to have, it's a conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yeah, in a C2.
In C2, that's right. So, if you're tracking with where I'm going, if y'all are saying we got enough used cars, then unless Mr. McDaniel can demonstrate to you why we, that's wrong, we don't, why your perception is wrong, unless he can clearly and convincingly demonstrate that with facts and circumstances and data, then you would not be justified in rezoning the property.
But we can still go ahead with the hearing on the 15th to give him time to get that information together.
Correct.
Think about it and have the discussion, and then if we get around that same point and you don't wanna have the hearing, we just will have it and come back at another point and leave it the way it is. But that gives you two weeks, two weeks to think about it, kind of put it all together and see if that's what you wanna do.
I think we'll leave it as it is, no hearing, will be good.
So, just stop right now and don't have the hearing on the 15th?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, no rezoning.
We'll just leave it residential.
Okay, leave it residential, so, alright.
Can I suggest then, um, that we go back to, first, we need to go back to Central Electric and confirm, since it's a joint petition, we need to confirm with Central Electric that they do not desire to continue, 'cause right now it's a jointly set hearing on the 15th, that's what Daniel moved for.
For both.
For both of those, so we need Central Electric to say, hey, we're good, but never mind that too. Uh, and before we officially take that one off, so Daniel's motion, or the, the record will simply need to reflect that item G is not being considered.
Right, I mean, that, right, because that's for, that's for the conditional use permit, item G is, right?
We're, we're passing item G, it will not be considered or acted on. And I won't miss Renee, I'll affirm with Central Electric that they're okay with withdrawing the petition to rezone, they're part of it. We need to just confirm that, just get something in writing from those guys.
Alright, so my motion is on G to cancel G, not, not set the public hearing.
We don't even need a motion, we just want the record to reflect that we're not acting on item G.
Alright, so no action taken on item G, and then F is a clarity with Ms. Renee to talk to Central Electric?
Right now, it's set for public hearing.
But if Central Electric does not wanna pursue the zoning change, we don't have to pursue it any further.
Yeah.
If you're alright with that?
They just won't put it on there.
And then get back with us and at some other point you're gonna do something different and we'll figure out something.
We just need finding another location.
Thanks, guys, you have a great day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't know if I need to, do we, I need no action, we've already taken the action we'll take, so you're good to move.
Alright. Let's go to nuisance property, Ms., uh, Ms. Renee. Well, there's nothing under our site plan, or, or do you have anything that you wanna add there? Okay.
First item under nuisance property hearings is the Eva Lois Frazier nuisance property at 320 Old Highway 43, District 4. I will open that public hearing, I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
Alright, so, um, we have received a complaint on this property about the condition of the home on the property and rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken on the 11th of March. Uh, the certified mail was received, um, by the granddaughter. The lady who actually owns the property is in the nursing home, but the granddaughter said it's her mobile home, her manufactured home. These are the new pictures. The front of the property has been cleaned up. Uh, we asked her to demolish or remove that mobile home. But that has not happened. In the back, the grass is still tall in the back. I'm not sure if she's here today or not.
Okay, so we would ask if there's anyone here to speak on the Eva Lois Frazier nuisance property. Is anyone here to speak on that? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, so we will close the public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take any action you wish to take.
Making a motion, we said it. Motion.
Declare it.
Oh, okay, declare it.
Second.
And say, whatever we wanna, whatever we need to do to move it forward.
Gotcha.
Alright, motion by myself, second by Bob. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, that's our standard motion. What will happen there is you've now declared it a nuisance, and so Ms. Renee's office will initiate a justice court proceeding. And, and that's how the matter will be handled. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Is that what you intended to happen?
Yes.
Uh, next item, item B is the, if I didn't say that that hearing is closed, that's closed. The next item is item B, Jimmy Allen Nuisance Property, 106 Fort Leesburg Road, District 4. I will open that public hearing, I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
Thank you, sir. Alright, this is actually a 16th section of leased property. We've received complaints on this property before. I think it is a fairly newer owner since that time. These pictures were taken in April, showing the condition of the property. The mail was sent, it was not signed for. And then these are the new pictures, there hasn't been any change.
Is Mr. Allen or anyone for Mr. Allen here, sir? Alright, come forward, please. If you will state your name and address, and then you can explain to the board what, if anything, you intend to do.
Oh, my name's Jimmy Luke O'Callaghan. Oh. I'm at my mom and daddy's place, and they, my mom left it to me, and, uh, which I do a lot of work, a little bit of everybody in Rankin County, you know, if I got some work, I do it, so. My place look like it today, I mean, my neighbor, they all, I mean, all always get along, but they're just, you know, always got one old soul apple in every bunk. But, um, it can look like it today, it can be different tomorrow, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'll be working help around this day, or bubble over here tomorrow, you know, but that night I go clean mine, you know, but I listen to, but, me and my wife, we give, we get, we separating, and she's eating. I'm about happy as ever, but, but now, I mean, I, can I build a fence? What can I do to make y'all happy?
Clean it up would be the answer I would say.
Hell, I know I need to do that, sir.
Yeah, I'm with you. I mean, but clean it up would be the first answer I would move for on that part.
The fence is all laying down.
Well, now, see, I'm gonna tell you, this here's some fence I took down. I mean, Ben's, you know, every year, I, every year I get the same thing, I mean, you know, I get a letter or some sort, or somebody complaining about my junk, you know, when they need to clean up around their own place, but, you know, oh. I got this huge fence, old fence, so I take old junk, I'm gonna make that old fence, that old junky fence, I'm gonna make it look half, half decent, you know what I'm saying? If that was, if that'd be alright with y'all, can I do that?
I'm not sure if I, I get what you're talking about. You're gonna take an old fence and put it back on?
I'll take that old fence I took down, I'll clean it up, pressure water, paint it, do whatever I gotta do.
So, you took this old fence down from somewhere else and brought it there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, it didn't fall?
No, sir.
You brought it in there?
I brought it in there, yes, sir.
I got you.
No, it, it didn't fall.
Well, if it's in that bad a shape you took it down, it's gonna be worth painting.
Well, I mean, you know what, you know, they got this old junk now, it's called Miracle, you know, it'll give you straight lumber, so.
Mike Word, you're with ELC.
Yes.
I think this, can you help here? How, emergency.
It is emergency.
Well, really, I think a backhoe and a dump truck, and start loading that stuff in the dump truck and hauling it over to, uh, Mount Ham.
Yes, sir, I understand that, sir.
Or dig a hole and bury it.
Dead, right there.
If, if the EQ or whatever says that's, well, you can ask Mike in that.
He don't wanna dig a hole and bury it.
Yeah.
Dig a hole and burn it.
I just want it cleaned up, that's what I-
Well, I tell you, boy, I can, I can, I can make it happen for you today. If I make you feel better, I'm gonna light something up right now.
I, I don't need you to necessarily light the house up, but I'm talking about the stuff around it. I need it cleaned up, is what I need. I need it cleaned up.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'll get on that tomorrow. I mean, I came today, 'cause I wanna live here, I gotta go to work. I gotta go plant food plots, bubble plant.
I'll be dogging. You're gonna plant food plots? Yep.
Those are gonna be real, real bad.
They're gonna eat all year round.
I know, I like to feed them year round myself, but, but we gotta get it cleaned up, that's the problem.
Well, can, can, well, just tell me how long I got to get it done, sir?
Not very long.
How long is that tomorrow?
Now, well, this man'll have to make the decision, but normally we'll declare that a nuisance and then you got a short period of time for it winds up in the, in the, uh, court.
Yes, sir, I understand that, sir.
I tell you what, it, it is a nuisance problem.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna recommend we declare it a nuisance and give you 60 days.
Yes, sir.
If it's not cleaned up, then you won't be coming back to this again.
Yes, sir.
You'll have the authority to go ahead and, and you'll be talking to the court up there.
Yes, sir.
Alright?
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's sort of making a motion.
Perfect.
Okay, second. Declare nuisance, and in 60 days, we'll revisit this. If you don't hear from us, then you got it cleaned up good, otherwise you'll get a letter.
Yes, sir.
Our people will be, be monitoring it.
We need to get your phone number, contact.
Alright, I, I made that motion, Jared seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion passes.
To the extent that we failed to close that hearing, it's closed.
Okay.
Item C. Item C is the Angela Beckwith nuisance property at 2834 Highway 471. This is a District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing and I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate with the photos, please.
Alright, so, um, we've received, um, complaints on this property. These pictures were taken April the 1st, about rubbish and debris. The property actually sold to a new owner. Uh, she did receive the mail and she called, and she has done some cleanup. These are the new pictures, the grass has been cut. Uh, she has done a pretty good job getting rid of the rubbish and debris.
I'm glad to see they got that up in District 4. I thought this was in 1.
So, I'm not sure, I don't think she's here today.
So, we're making progress?
She has made some progress. Uh, we don't want to end up in the exact same place we are now if the grass starts growing and, uh, bring her back, so, um, how would you feel about declaring it?
Is this happening before?
Well, that property has been a nuisance, however, like I said, she recently, it's, it's, she's purchased it fairly recently and, um, she probably inherited some of that mess, but she has cleaned it up. She's making an effort right now, but, um, if y'all would declare it a nuisance and let us just monitor it, that way if it gets back in bad condition, we could go straight to justice.
Do we need to put a time, timeframe on it, or just declare it a nuisance unless you monitor it from that point and you can take action from there? Let's do that then.
We've actually got an entire 12-month period from the initial declaration to continue to monitor without having to come back under the law. And just for the record, is, is Ms. Beckwith, Angela Beckwith present or anyone on her behalf? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
She is a fairly new owner. She did purchase it. We had started this process with the other owner and, um, so that's what I'm saying, I think she probably inherited some of that mess in the yard, but-
We dealt with her some last summer, this same lady.
Okay, so this is- It's not her first time, it's not her first time, it's not her first time.
Alright, nevermind, nevermind. I just hate doing that to like brand new owners.
That's trying to clean it, well, at, at any point y'all feel like it's back under control, then we, we can- Well, at any point, y'all feel like it's back under control, then we can go from there, but that'd be my motion, declaring a nuisance and allow Renee's office to monitor.
Where is it located?
So Daniel's motion would be to declare it a nuisance and to allow community development to monitor.
All right, I have a motion by Daniel. Go ahead and declare it a nuisance, and y'all monitor it.
Second.
Second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item D is the Ina Lou Puckett nuisance property, 330 Cole Road, this District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
All right, so we've received a complaint on this property before. These pictures were taken April the 1st showing the condition of the property. These are the new pictures. Ms. Puckett, I believe, and her daughter are here today.
Come on up, Ms. Puckett. Take the microphone, too, or Craig, if that makes sense.
It's okay, hold it, let's go.
We're gonna let it go right there. That's far enough, right there. Go on, Mike.
I can't hear now.
Yes, we'll make sure you.
I'll tell her.
That's kind of where we're all at, Duane, and what we're, I mean, I remember this coming up several months ago, and there has been some movement with, I think, at least one mobile home was removed, wasn't it?
It was. I think the issue was the campers and.
So have we gotten a recent complaint?
Well, there was trash everywhere. I remember it was.
Yes, sir, it was at one time.
Yeah.
And we've been working on it a little, you know? When we all work, it's kind of hard to get down there every day and try to work on it.
All right, we'll probably go the same route that Mr. Gaines just pursued with the prior one up on Leesburg Road. We're gonna go ahead and declare it a nuisance, give you about 60 days, and stay with Duane or whoever on our office to make sure that we continue to make progress on this, on this property. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, sir. Okay, I just got a few quick, okay, like the campers. Do we have to move all them campers off?
Yes, ma'am.
Will they run?
Are they tagged?
Do they run?
Are they got tags on them?
What's that mean?
Have a current tag on them?
I don't know, 'cause one of them is my brother's, and one of them is my son's. And the other one is mine. Yeah, the little one, my son, let mama use it for storage. She puts stuff in it, the smaller one. The Winnebago looking thing is my brother's.
If they don't belong to her, she needs to, they need to be removed from the property. Does that seem fair, Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Renee, can you just briefly explain the use of, like, a camper for storage purposes? How is that handled typically?
Typically, it wouldn't be allowed, you know? It wouldn't.
It's not allowed.
It's not storage shed. It's a portable storage shed.
You can't use a camper for storage. It has to be an operable vehicle, so that's a motor vehicle.
Put half the stuff in my house.
It has to be operable under our regulations. It's clear that it is being used for storage. It's not being used as a vehicle.
And what, and Craig, let him know, we'll continue to work with you. At the end of 60 days, if we see more progress and stuff, then we'll continue to work on, you know, that all have to be done in 60 days, but we need to see progress as we, as we revisit this on at least a monthly basis. I mean, my folks need to go down on them once a month, look and see, to see there's demonstration that we are doing something to keep, to get the property in a more pleasant state.
That's the right way to word it. We can, if we can get the brother to come get his camper, that will be very helpful.
Yeah, without the big one there in that picture, I know they can't see, but I guess that's the big one.
Yeah, I think it might be.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand why he has to move it. A lot of people keep campers on their property.
If they're tagged and have current insurance on them, that's perfectly fine. That's the tag, have insurance, and be, be road, you know, where he can drive it.
But cannot be used as a living residence, cannot be used as a residence on site, right? Do I know?
That's correct, you cannot use it as a dwelling.
I mean, he don't use, I mean, he'll stay in it every once in a while on weekends to stay at mama's, you know, to help keep her, you know, watch her, but I mean, he don't just live in it, you know? But he really has nowhere else to put it, 'cause he don't have his own property.
How much land does she have there?
One acre.
I don't even think it's, how much land you got there, mama?
Three quarters of an acre.
Three quarters of an acre.
But even though the regulations would still not allow it, if you were sitting there on 15 acres or something, and this was far removed from back, you couldn't see it from the road, something like that, but when you're talking about putting two or three different almost residents on one lot, it just jams it up, and people are gonna see it, and they, and we get the complaints.
Yep. It's a, it's a sightliness issue with the neighborhood.
Well, you can only live, one can only be there so many days, isn't it right? Renee?
Well, I mean, you could, you could park one on your property, like, if you traveled in it and that kind of thing. A lot of people, you know.
If it had a tag and everything.
If it was tagged, remain road ready, it wasn't being used as a dwelling.
I'm not sure, 'cause I mean, he's drove it before, almost, I don't know if he's, I don't know if it's tagged or not.
If I could make a suggestion, the first thing needs to happen, let's, we'll attack the camper first. The brother needs to be contacted and told, demonstrate with paperwork that it's properly tagged and insured and operable. If he can demonstrate those things, then it can stay.
What's operable?
Drivable.
Oh, yeah, it's drivable.
Okay.
Well, it used to be, I guess it's still, yeah.
I mean, he's, he's kind of creating some of the problem.
Yes.
Right.
He needs to do those three things. Does it have a current tag?
When the magos are being moved, and the little bitty campers gotta be moved.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the little one. The little one is hers, the, it was mama's.
Well, I mean, it is, but she uses it for storage, don't they?
For storage. I don't know.
She's got stuff in it, she.
Can't live in it.
Yeah. I mean, it can be livable, but she used, you know, she lived in it, right? I mean, when it gets live, it's no problem.
I tell you what, I tell you what, let's just kind of bring this to a head. I want to make a motion that we declare it a public nuisance, give it 60 days, Duane and your, your group kind of work with them, explain to them what needs to be done. You've done it a mi, Mr. Jones here has done it a million times. He can work it out with you to make it work palpable from a timeline standpoint and a clear understanding of what we need to see done. I made that motion.
Okay, second.
All right, Bob makes a motion, we declare it a nuisance, and we monitor this for 60 days, similar to the ones we've done here earlier today. Jared seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is item E, the Norman Ray Thompson nuisance property. This is 1124 Leesburg Road. This is District Four. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to show, demonstrate the photos.
All right, so this is 16th section lease also. Originally, there was one camper here. We just started working this. The second one has been brought in.
So steady cleaning up, they adding some.
Right, the wheels were taken off of the one camper.
After we started working it, they brought in another.
He's using it for a dwelling. There's also an inoperable vehicle on the property.
We know what they did with that camper, hell.
We've sent a certified mail, no response. It was not received, unclaimed. And these are the new pictures. Nothing's been done. I'm not sure if the vehicle's gone now, is it?
I did not see it.
Okay, so the vehicle may have been removed.
Yeah, that right there.
Got a fence up.
Long before that.
I think Duane talked to this fella. He took the wheels out from under the camper.
Well, that makes it a home. That makes it a home, then. It's okay.
And sold them.
He sold the wheels?
That's what Duane said. He sold the wheels, so I'm not sure.
He told you he sold the wheels? He's gotta have money, man.
But anyway, it's in default. The lease is in default with the school district. We checked, and they have someone who is, I think, catching up whatever is owed on it. He owes one more payment, and so they won't transfer it into his name until that's taken care of.
How does the school deal with their, their issues like that?
This is supposed to be, in terms of, of the jurisdictional aspect of this, it really needs to fall back on the school district to monitor this through its lease. Okay, so the lease has language in it that addresses the condition of the property and how it's maintained. So my thought process would be that we need to follow up with the school district.
Does anybody, is anyone here? There's no one here.
Just for the record, is anyone here on behalf of Norman Ray Thompson? I don't think so. So what I would suggest is, let's follow up with the school district and just sort of get on top of what they are doing, if anything, to address the condition of the property, probably nothing, but just from the standpoint of it being 16th section property, we need to bring them into this discussion and ask them to help us with the condition of this property to address it. The issue that I have is that if you guys, at this point, it doesn't appear that it's gonna do us much good to declare it a nuisance and have it pushed up to justice court, guy's not gonna be responsive to it.
Would that not help the school board?
It will.
And their support?
It would definitely help if we go that route. If, to, to completely deal with the issue, my sense would be that.
I understand.
It would be us having to do it. And with it being 16th section, the mechanisms for us to deal with it are not there.
Right.
We can't use a lien against school district property, okay? So we would have no way to recover our money, whatever we spend, whatever the county could spend to, to address that condition of that property. So I think we bring the school district in. We go ahead and declare it a nuisance and use the justice court process, Steve, I just don't think we should anticipate we're gonna get very much help there.
I understand. All right, I make a motion that we declare it nuisance. Second. Right away. Second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Am I the only one who acknowledges these votes? I'll get one word out of you guys, not each one. I said, I had a big deal, but I said, I guess, I guess, those sound as an, yeah, okay, I mean, it don't big deal.
I'll get closer to the microphone.
You'll try it again?
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, we'll leave on.
All right, our next meeting, our next meeting will be held on May 30th, 2019, at nine o'clock, and this meeting is recessed.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jared seconded. All in favor?
There we go.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, shall we move? All right, I guess we should open up this Rankin County.
You don't have to, you can just blew this baby onto Monday if you want.
Very short.
Well, I think it's gonna be stacked pretty good on Monday. I'd rather, while we're here, let's just go ahead and do it. Let's open this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting of May 2nd, 2019. We're calling this to order, and we have any public comments?
Nope.
All right, Craig Slay.
Yes, sir.
Right out of the chute.
I make a motion, we approve this declaration, unless you just think you need to read it into a minutes.
Yeah, second.
Just for the, for the record, and so that it's on the recording, this is ratifying the emergency declarations made on April the 19th.
I make that motion.
Yeah, second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob to ratify this emergency action that was taken by our board on April the 19th and following days in conjunction with the storms that we had. Daniel seconded that motion. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
There we go.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
How long will that last, you think, Jessica? Not long? I don't think so. I think they're just being nice to me today.
Mr. President, item B, under my section is a follow-up discussion. If the board's interested in having any follow-up discussion on our proposed heavy haul ordinance, just, we put this as a placeholder on here. The public hearing that the board has already scheduled is set for Monday, and so this was an opportunity, if there needs to be any discussion at this stage, you're, we're welcome to engage in that now.
Slay, would you, would you mind reviewing the one we already have in place for the overlay district? And then reviewing the proposed changes, just for, as a refresher for me?
Right. The current ordinance that is in place only applies to platted subdivisions in the reservoir community district. So this is a narrow area of Supervisor District Two, primarily, there may be some RCD that's in other districts, but primarily Supervisor District Two, and it only applies to platted subdivisions. The board took the action to declare platted subdivision streets in the RCD to be what we call no-truck roads. And so what it does, it sets up a barrier for the use of trucks that are defined in that ordinance. They have to be of a certain size, and we exempt other vehicles that would otherwise be trucks, school buses, FedEx truck, UPS guy, county vehicles, municipal vehicles that are trucks. We exempt all of those from the ordinance. But what we say is, if it's a truck and it's going into a platted subdivision in the RCD, there has to be a permit process. They've worked through our road manager to acquire a permit. If there is going to be significant, the potential for significant damage to the streets of a platted subdivision in the RCD, by that activity on that permit, the road manager has the discretion to utilize a, what we're calling a bond, or some sort of protection for that road. I think, Mike, we also make sure they got some kind of insurance certificate as well, proof of liability insurance as well. And so that's, that's the basic structure of it. We've had that in place now for.
Two years, two and a half?
Yeah, close to two years, if not two years. And it has, it seemed to work well enough. That, that action that was taken by the board to adopt that ordinance was responsive to some clear and present danger to some roads that had just been freshly overlaid that were being damaged significantly by construction activity. So that, it effectively eliminated that from happening. We were actually able to use a developer's money to repair damage that was done, and so the taxpayers were saved as a result of that from having to spend money for damage that was done by a developer. All right, so there's that. Now, correspondingly, what is before you would not simply be, it would be similar in context, that is, that the roads, certain roads in the county, and the board has not made a determination yet as to the full scope, but essentially, non-state aid, non-state highway, that is, roads that are purely county roads, would be, would be subject to the same declaration of being a no-truck road, and certain activity primarily related to timber hauling activity and construction activity, those are the two primary areas where we, where we are attempting to effect some regulation.
All right, let me stop right there, interrupt you for one, just for clarity. We already have the loggers in place right now, right?
That's correct.
That's not really changing.
Yeah, so for clarity, to make it clear, we don't have an ordinance. What we have is a policy.
Permit policy.
Yeah, we have a permit policy that we use for the logging industry. And so let me camp out on that for just a second to help you understand how we have handled logging permits. And by the way, the logging permit has always been countywide. That's just what, that's what we've done, and it's worked, and the logging interests are familiar with it and understand it, and it, and it comports with what other counties do, and the way, and Mike, again, handles that simply by virtue of being the road manager. There's a permit and a proof of insurance, and Mike establishes on the permit a haul route. We don't use a bonding approach with timber, although we have in the past had voluntary participation with a, with a commitment to repair damage to a road if damage occurs. And so occasionally, we've stepped out and used some type of protection on the county roads under our logging permit structure, but that's been voluntary, it's not mandatory. So what's being discussed and considered is taking the approach that we're using for logging and make it applicable to construction and other truck activities. They make that truck definition.
Okay.
That's kind of a big 30,000-foot-
That's on the logger side of it, right?
That's really on everything.
All of it.
Yeah, so what's before you guys is to not use the requirement of a bond, but to use the, a similar process that we use with the timber folks, which is a permit, haul route, and proof of insurance. Those are the three primary requirements of your proposed-
That will be countywide.
Countywide, and it would not apply to state highways-
State aid roads, yeah.
Or state aid roads.
Gotcha.
So it's outside the platted subdivision. I want to make that clear. It's outside the platted subdivision context. It would broaden to pick up county roads that are not state aid, not state highway. And it would include platted subdivisions, because those are, if they're platted and we've accepted those, those are public streets. So it would include those, but it's beyond just the platted subdivision. That's what's on the table. Permit, haul route, proof of insurance.
How successful have we been to recoup, if they've torn up a road, the logging, really?
Pretty well with that, I have to remind you.
I mean, most everybody wants to play by the rules. You've got the first, you've got a couple of runaways out there.
Yeah, most of them have-
But most of them will, you know, cooperate and do.
They pretty much-
Because they've got 80,000 pounds. They understand what an 80,000, you know, that kind of stuff on a repetitive basis is going to do to a road.
And here's the thing, if they will stay where the roads we asked them to stay on, then we'll deal with the issues of it. But when you go John Wayne and go road and not follow the haul routes-
Well, I do think regardless, I do think regardless of whatever we try and end up doing is that we need to give Mike the penalty phase with even in the timber ordinance. He doesn't have that either. That's his problem. He can find somebody on a road-
He can't handle that.
And he can't do anything about it. You know, he puts his life in jeopardy, you know.
It would be nice for us to have that documented in an ordinance. It would be good for us to have a penalty provision in there. Right now, all we have is a state law, 65743, that says the county, the board supervisors is responsible for county roads and can recover for damage to those roads that's caused. Okay? So there is a, there's a statute that lets us pursue recovery, but all of the issues for us is that it's after the fact. That comes after the fact. We find that somebody has damaged our road, then we can go and pursue that. So what you're being asked to consider is a better mechanism, or, I mean, I need to be more careful than that, a different mechanism that lets you address the potential for damage before it happens. So that's what the haul route's designed to do.
Well, and to expand it outside the overlay district, because we have it there now. You're just trying to make it all countywide. And that's basically the summation of it?
So, yes, and if you guys were to go in this direction, to go ahead and adopt something like this, then there, then it would, it would supersede the RCD. We would be able to use the new ordinance to apply countywide, and the impacts that we're seeing in the more urban, higher developed areas, we can use this new approach there as well.
I mean, we're obviously getting pushed back. I think that might be why that from different groups or some specific groups. But everything I keep hearing is, they say they want us to take a much slower approach. And I don't, I guess they're going to explain that to us on Monday, but I don't quite get how you can do a slower approach, but maybe it has my insight to do with that.
Well, we got a four-page letter, certified mail, that told you guys that you needed to go real slow, and you need to be thoughtful and considerate about lots of different options that may be available, but after four pages of reading through all of that, I never saw any options. Did y'all?
Yeah, their options don't do it.
Well, I hope that Monday they can explain.
I do, too.
And I'm not in a hurry. I would like for them to pull out three or four people that want to be helpful, and if we've met a few times to where we both can agree with what we've got. I can see in my district where I have a lot of county roads that are not in platted subdivisions, and I have a lot of guys that do construction work, do pads, say, you know, house pads or whatever, and they may be leaving today to go do a pad that takes 15 loads of dirt. And tomorrow, they may be going in a whole different direction to do another one. And then halfway through that day, they get this done, and they pick up and go, I mean, they're moving their equipment, they're moving the dirt, and they're doing this all the time, and to say, what road I'm going to be on, it's I'm going to be on all of them. Can I just get a permit for a year? You know? But anyhow, I want to hear from them and see if we can at least have some dialogue. And that's what, I think that's what Monday's supposed to be for, anyhow.
Yes, sir. It's a dialogue.
I try to explain to them something's going to happen. So I think what Steve's saying is good. If they realize that something's going to happen and that they can feel like they've, we've compromised or something, they've had some input in us, and give or take a little, we may come out this way. So I'm not in a real rush to do that.
I've always contemplated that what's going to happen on Monday is that you guys are going to hear, you're going to receive information from those who would be most impacted by your decision. I've never thought that the board would be in a, and I guess I'm getting ahead of you. I've never thought y'all would be in a position to do anything on Monday other than to receive this information. You're going to need time to process this.
Sometimes, though, like Monday, and there's, say, there's 40 people that come in or more. Sometimes people's temperature gets heated, and they start entertaining one another, and we don't get a lot of coverage, but I would like, say, at that time, to get them to have a few people, three or four people, that represent them and where we meet and have a casual conversation about what they're looking for.
Personally, that seems like a very reasonable conclusion to Monday's events, that there would be a continuing dialogue. Now, what that looks like, Steve, y'all can decide.
I mean, I think it would benefit them to have it, so.
Yes.
Did the home builders, Daniel, did they not jump on, did they not pay attention? We did the development orders, because I mean, I don't, I know they sat down with us and we kind of worked through them, didn't we?
We've sat down with three or four of them before on different sides of it and reviewed the last, the one we created just for the overlay district, we sat down with the home builder association.
I'm talking about just the development orders we did for the whole county for subdivisions. I mean, we, you know, we've got a haul route there, and we've got a couple of these there.
Yes, we had that conversation here regarding that, you know?
Y'all may remember.
But we put the one that we put in place here, we sat down with Christian Cowan, who was, you know, president of the Home Builder Association, and we went through all those situations. And the, again, the main issue that I have with the whole thing is that when we prescribe a route, that we want those trucks to stay on that route. And the prime example I think of is we get dump trucks coming off 25, off Stowe Road or one of those pits, and we ask them to go down Highway 25, trying, they're trying to get to Old Fane. Once you go down Spillway Road, any of those areas, but then they come down and they, they don't want to go through all the stoplights or the traffic, so they cut through Heador Boulevard, we put a million dollars into it, and then they cut through Avalon subdivision, through the back of Huntington Lake, and they destroy those roads. And they're not even in the haul route, just because they don't want the inconvenience of going somewhere else. And, and-
I'm with the logger, dude.
So the problem is, of the 200 subdivisions we got in that district, we, there's going to be times where you're going to have to go through the subdivision to get there. I get that. And Mike's going to work with those guys to get them to that spot, but we need to limit the amount of damage we can put out there as best we can. And that's, that's the point of it.
If the destination is Avalon, knock yourself out.
Yeah.
But if the destination is somewhere down Old Fane, why in the devil are you going through Avalon?
Because it's easier on the driver, you know? But it, but it's worse on us because we can't, we don't have the money to go back and fix, we don't have the money to fix what we have. So we dang sure don't have the money to go back and fix what we've already fixed, so.
So, again, just to, to your point, Bob, when we, when the development ordinance was coming online, I'll fire back Tim on this, but my recollection is that we got some participation out of the development community, but it wasn't significant. They, they sort of were familiar enough with the existing development ordinance to where the additional requirements that were coming online in the new development ordinance were not so different that it caused them a lot of heartburn. So I think that was why that we didn't get as much participation as we had originally thought, but we did get some.
Yeah. I thought, I very remember them sitting down with us, because I know it was up in the Rose Bowl area, that grants very, but Castle Woods folks up there, they were developing that out, so, yeah.
Unless-
And like, and like the point you mentioned, the majority of the reservoirs developed out. We've got some new subdivisions coming on the North Shore or whatever, so the original discussion was not necessarily take it countywide, but to take it throughout the county for platted subdivisions only-
Right.
Was the initial discussion. And then you can do all your other areas of the county that's not involved with subdivisions.
Maybe that's their definition of taking it slow and easy. Maybe we try the platted subdivisions for 12 or 24 months and see if it's successful there.
And to me, in my, in my mind, those are the more critical areas, is that you've got people going into these subdivisions and hit all the streets instead of just hitting just one, you know? So the platted subdivisions are the ones that are the most delicate, and those are the ones that you're going to get the most public comment back because the people that live on.
Sure.
You know, so I'm good with that side of it, but it's critical, if you've got 85% platted subdivision, which is what I have, that I have some type of regulation with some enforcement power to be able to keep them off the roads that they're not supposed to be on or don't need to be on. So, if not, you can't fix it.
And unless there be any confusion on the point, and I don't think there is any for the audience that I'm speaking to, this is for others who may be listening in, the development ordinance protects the roads already, but that is for developments that have not yet been turned over for county maintenance. So you already regulate some activity through your development ordinance, but the issue for us that we discovered, and why we had to jump on the RCD issue two years ago, is that we have subdivisions that we've already accepted for maintenance that still have lots that have not yet been built out. And so when a developer comes in and snatches up, I'll just choose a number, eight lots. I'll choose a location, Castle Woods.
Yeah.
When a developer does that, snatches up eight lots, and it's already subject to county maintenance, and starts hauling dump load after dump load after dump load down Castle Woods Boulevard to get to his eight lots, we don't have a way to protect what is already a public road. Okay? So the development ordinance is good as far as it goes, but some sort of regulation in a, in the context of platted subdivisions would make sense because we, we don't have a way to protect those adequately.
Craig, I think there's multiple houses, too.
Yeah, so, you know, the one-off, we've, we said in the, in the current proposal, if it's a one-off deal, it's one lot in a subdivision, we're not asking for that particular activity to go through the entire permit process. That would be excluded, the one-off.
I'm talking about multiple houses.
We're talking about multiple houses.
I don't know how you're going to catch that, though. I'm not sure how you're going to pick up on that.
If I'm a builder, I'm doing one at a time.
That's why. And I'm going, I'm going to come up today if I want, next week I'm going to come get me another one.
See, I, see, I think in their mind, their process is I can save money-
Yep.
-by clearing four or five lots in a row-
Exactly.
And have them all there.
That would be a disincentive.
That would be-
I'd be okay with that personally, because it spreads out.
Because that's limited time. That's right. And as we see things tearing up or wearing, we're going to do some assessments.
I just think it gets back to the Avalon problem. I've had all along, it's how we're going to find it and track it and enforce it, but I'm more than happy to have the discussion on Monday and look forward to it.
We're getting into weeds that we're going to cover again Monday.
Yeah, I agree.
This was for you guys-
Thank you.
To kind of hash it, this is a little bit of a rehearsal for y'all for Monday.
Yep.
Okay? Is that good enough, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may ask for your indulgence on one item, this road manager handed me something today that I think is a solution. I'm not really sure how many of you guys are aware. We had one vehicle that was purchased from a local dealer through its fleet program that is under Mike's purview. This vehicle is a, is a diesel, help me out here, Mike, what is this?
Gas, diesel, one-ton truck.
Diesel one-ton truck. Nothing but problems with this truck from day one. Nothing but problems. Had it at the shop multiple times, and it has sat there for extended period of times trying to figure out what's wrong with the thing. And so Mike's been having recurring discussions with the dealer, asking for some sort of relief, and we now have a proposal that I think is acceptable, and I want to run it by you. Mike would like to turn that vehicle back in and obtain a gas burner, and they're going to write us a check for $615 as part of the deal. I've got a breakdown of the numbers on the swap-out. This is a 2017, we'll be getting a 2019. It looks like it's got everything that Mike wants on this gas burner, and so what we would like is permission to effect this swap-out.
This is a new lease?
This will be a new purchase.
Purchase or lease?
Purchase.
Purchase, okay.
West R plus, West R plus, I own a truck.
And they're taking the other truck and giving us $600, and we're driving away with paying a title fee. Get me a deal like that.
The title fee is included in the deal.
I know, I mean, I know what the, the thing is, is that the diesels are more valuable. When you have diesel problems, they're not more valuable then. They cost a lot more to fix.
This truck been in the shop for five more years.
Yep.
I make a motion out to the agenda.
What brand?
Chevrolet.
I was going to say Dodge. What were you going to say?
I was going to say Ford. And not because any of them have more problems than others, we just drive on our department, we have more Ford's.
I make a motion out to the agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to add this vehicle swap to the agenda. Bob makes a motion, Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, it's added to the agenda now.
It just for purposes of the comment for the record, to the extent that it needs to be clarified, all of this is state contract.
Yeah.
Every bit of this.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve this transaction. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes.
I think we're moving on to Wanda's section on agendas. I don't see on the May 6th agenda, Janice, of any discussion about the heavy haul. I would like, as I mentioned to the President, I'm trying to go out, soon I'll try to go out of town Monday, I'm not under such a tight line to go, but I'd like to have that public discussion on the front end of the meeting, not to mention the fact all those folks are going to be here or who's going to be here. They'll want to sit through all this other stuff they've got to go through, you know, to, for we get to the heavy haul, so I'd like to move that into the, underneath public comments or a separate line item for that.
Let's try to set a timeframe, maybe, say, 9:15 to 10:15, to where we don't get too, because that, it's going to go until we stop it. I mean, I think-
You sure it's going to be that many people show up?
Well, I, I can imagine, if, I mean, if we can get through before that.
We'll have an attorney here that gets paid by the hour, you know?
But, I mean, let's just put it, at the limits on it an hour, and then we can meet back later.
Well, I also think that, you know, as a group here, we can kind of say, okay, Mr. President, I think we, we beat this dead horse. You find two other folks that agree with you, that pretty much allows you to shut it down, you know, if they've had the opportunity. But that's the only thing I see on there. Everything else looks pretty straightforward, as far as what we're having to do, and I don't need anything else, any other accomplishments or whatnot, accommodations.
Any additional business, any other additional business to be discussed?
What we have on our Monday, spoke with our bond people, and Monday's on our agenda to vote for our, to set our bonds, and so there's no change in it after that. That's it. So I think we need to resolve whatever issues we're going to resolve today.
My faith only issue is, is a million and a half, a $1.5 million threshold, is what you're talking about, right? Either we go 16 and a half or 18? Is that what you're talking about, or what?
No, I'm talking about-
Declaring pregnant?
What, yeah, exactly what we're going to spend it on, so we know how to identify if we're going to spend 16 and a half or do we need 18 and a half.
Well, you'll spend the 16 and a half or the 18.
Yeah, I understand.
Whatever you, whatever you do, you're going to spend it. If you want to keep that million and a half for rainy day fund or emergency down the road, that's fine, too. I have no problem. To sit here and try to hash out for the next three hours what roads we're going to do, I think it's just general road maintenance and construction, that's all we have to do, right?[1737.83]
If you look at your item on your, on the agenda, you've got an A, a B, and a C that lays out by statute what you are authorized by statute to spend bond proceeds on. It laid out for you, purchasing, erecting, and equipping, repairing, and reconstructing, remodeling buildings, courthouses, office buildings, jails, related facilities, and the purchase of land therefor. The B is constructing, reconstructing, and repairing roads, highways, and bridges, and acquiring necessary land. Item C obviously is the fire department, building a, building a, a fire department or a firehouse is also authorized as item C. So whatever you decide to do will need to fit within each of those three categories right there. So to, to pass the intent resolution, you don't have to say specifically, we're doing the following roadwork or building construction, you don't have to say that. You can, you want to, but you don't have to to do the intent resolution, so.
Well, am I missing something about here about drainage? We talked about putting some of this money off on the drainage fund, but I don't see any intent. Is that in there somewhere? Did I miss it?
Yeah, so statutorily, that is not one of the items establishing a drainage district, would not be one of the items that we would be authorized to use those funds for. So what you would want to think about and consider doing is how you can use bond proceeds in order to free up additional money that you would have otherwise spent on one of those items to use for your establishment, your drainage district.
A little shell game?
It's, it's, um, moving money to where it's authorized to do it.
Well, we don't necessarily say drainage, creation of drainage, we can spend it on drainage anyway, can't we?
Well, I think we need to go ahead and create the district because I think we had that discussion.
Drainage that's associated with roads, either repairing or constructing or building roads.
I mean, we had, we, we gave Craig and Brunini and Wagner the authorization to spend somewhere between fifty to a hundred grand to come out and flush out the, the creation of a drainage district so we could start that process.
Right.
I don't want to pigeonhole us by doing something that, we just need to say our intent is, well, of course, if we're playing the shell game, that don't really make any difference because we're not having to disclose. So, but, okay, I'm, I, but for, to your comment while ago, Jay, I mean, you know, I, I made the motion, Jay, Jared I did, to go ahead and do eighteen, and y'all voted to do the sixteen and a half.
I wanna re-address that, if you don't, I mean, 'cause we, we have till Monday. I didn't see, uh, and I guess I sh- I hadn't talked to you, I think there should be some room in there for Bob's district. And it's not, it's not the way it is right now, if you look at everything. Jay, uh, has said from the very beginning, you know, y'all just helped me with my problems, which he has very little roads, or come, well, when you consider ours. And at the sixteen, it's not. I, I hate to say it, but I think that, uh, I, I don't wanna do this and then at the end or, or get halfway through it and we, and I know what we'll do. As, as any other project goes, costs are gonna cost us more than what we think right now. And we're gonna get halfway through it or more and say, Mike, where's the money? And he's gonna say, I don't have any. Remember, y'all took some of mine. I, I think that, well, I think our advisors have said we're safe at eighteen and a million and a half is a lot of dollars to me. But in this, the scheme of this, I think we'd be safer to go for the eighteen and not, and, and be able to try to meet all our needs instead of the sixteen-five and cutting our way, uh, out of it, three-quarters of a year down the road, a year down the road, or whatever, when we find out, I mean, just the project, I talked with Buster about Andrew Chapel, we've got all kinda good numbers and bids or, uh, estimates. And then the guys that are putting in these culverts now, they have to do a drive around, and it's gonna cost us a, a good bit of money because the ground is so wet, they've gotta bring dry dirt in there for the drive-arounds that we never even anticipated. And, uh, we're gonna have those things on these projects. So y'all say what you, I mean, however you feel on it, we are at sixteen-five, but I think we can.
Yeah, so I wanna clarify one thing, to, to verify what you said, my recollection is that your advisor indicated that there is, um, room in the debt service to accommodate an offering of up to eighteen million.
Yes.
Okay? I, I believe he said that, we'd have to consult the tape to make sure, but I'm pretty confident that's what I heard. The second thing is, what you're being asked to do on Monday is to, in, is to adopt a resolution of intent.
Yep.
You do not have to spend.
You don't have to spend it, that's right.
What you say that you intend to issue. You can, what you cannot do is to tell the public that you're intending to issue sixteen and a half and then come back and say, we're gonna do eighteen. Once you establish the intent resolution, that is your maximum issuance.
Well, I just, I, I thank you for explaining that. We don't have to go to that point, but I don't, something that, that we, we haven't focused on in District Three. And I'm just using that district because it's getting the least amount of money, which they have good roads, but still, and then what about us? So I want Bob to have, uh, the same.
Five million?
I don't know about. Well, I'd like to put, okay.
Wait, so what you're saying is we can, we'd be better off to say the eighteen, we can't say eighteen, sixteen, and then go change it to eighteen. So if we're gonna, we ought to say eighteen, then if we change it to sixteen.
Yes.
Then we're okay.
You're right, exactly right.
I understand that part.
All right, so getting back to what my original point was, you know, whether we do sixteen and a half or eighteen, I, I want them to know one-hundred percent that District Five is getting a million dollars out of this.
I got you a million dollars.
I'm just saying.
Just for, for what?
For whatever I want to spend it on.
I don't know about that.
No, no. Jay's gonna spend it on something that fits into item A, B, or C in our intent resolution.
I'm getting a million dollars out of this sixteen and a half million dollars.
I got that million dollars for you.
I want one too, Jared.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, but I, and I get, hang on a second, I gotta come back to the light, just a second, I blacked out for a minute. All right, what, I think, my thing is, I need to know what projects we're headed, because we're at a crucial time that Mike needs to be able to plan for the summer. We're fix, if we kick the can down the road any further on not naming the projects that we're gonna do, then we're gonna get behind with our current road plan that we've got put out there, so.
Mike hadn't already got the summertime plan by now, and shame on Mike.
Yeah, but he doesn't know how to spend the money.
Well, he's got his budget, we're not affecting his budget.
I think, I think it's, I think it's drastically affecting his budget right now, because he don't.
I don't see that.
That's not what, not what Lynn said, I'm basing, we're doing this thing, it's not gonna impact.
Lynn didn't have Mike's budget.
Are we mistaken, Mike?
Bob, he, he did say it because we're gonna take a mill out, out of the budget.
All right.
But.
For two years.
That's leaving him short, uh, three million dollars over a two-year period.
For two years, that's correct.
Over a two-year period.
He said, yeah, but it's short, but he said, uh, initially we were gonna take the eight hundred thousand out of his budget. And with this, when we went back and looked at it, he came up, he and Lark came up with the other scenario.
To be able to get more money, right.
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm saying, so he didn't lose that eight hundred, he, so his budget stayed the same, but I understood it.
No, no, it's not. We're taking three million dollars out of his budget, so.
Over two years.
All right, so we're gonna take a million and a half this year and a million and a half the next year.
Right.
So we need to come up with some method to make our road fund whole.
When he said, he said, when, what was the eight hundred then?
Okay, 'cause originally whenever they said that, the, the Holly Bush project in here, that extra money was supposed to go in to cover our shortfall we were gonna have in the road fund. But since then, that has been taken up.
Yeah.
And so that's why I was wanting to go over here and so that we all understand, somehow we need to make sure our road fund is covered, 'cause y'all are all gonna be wanting a lot of work done over the next two years, and he gonna be over saying, sorry, I'm out of money.
But on the other side of that, on the other side of that, if when, when you got whatever these, uh, project, future projects, but the different ones, I can't name them, but projects are going on, people still are seeing that work going, and they don't know whether it's coming out of his road fund or it's coming out of his bond. They're still seeing the activity of the road.
The problem I've got is, is I've got thirty-four mi- today, thirty-four miles of road that needs overlaying, according to the Civil Link.
Chip seal, overlay or something.
No, I'm talking about overlay, I'm not talking about the rest of the other Band-Aid stuff. So I'm behind right out of the gate on that side of it.
I think we're all behind.
We're all behind there.
So my point is, why wouldn't we catch up on what we have negligent right now, instead of starting on, on some brand-new stuff?
We're not, we're never gonna, I mean, they're not gonna catch up.
You're exactly right. So if we're having trouble catching up on what we've got torn up, why wouldn't we fix that with some of this and then pick up some of the which list stuff? Doesn't that make more sense?
So what you're talking about doing is taking the sixteen B and strictly that, strictly the maintenance?
Well, I'm just simply saying, there's a plan out here, a five-year plan, that we don't have to go the whole five years, but you could implement two years of this road plan put through by Civil Link to say every district, the whole county, not just the reservoir, but the entire county, every district right here's got a plan for the next five years. Cut it down to two years, three years or whatever, and then every part of the county gets maintenance overlay on roads that's already been designed by the third party. But you're gonna neglect what we have torn up and then come around with the mindset of, let's start a bunch of new projects. I get it, we need the other new projects, but for the same point, if we got an opportunity to take four million dollars, five million dollars, and put it towards Civil Link for the entire betterment of the county's roads, why wouldn't we do it? That's what doesn't make any sense to me, because we've got those roads that we can't afford to fix if we don't raise money for this to fix, because you can't catch up with the Civil Link plan. I know it sounds trivial and comical, but that's, that's a fact. We can't fix that book without help from the bond. And the books tell us where your problems are, so.
Actually, that book's a little wrong, but.
Maybe worse.
Well.
I say, let's just raise taxes in August for about four mils for debt service, and we can do it all.
Yeah.
I'm prepared to vote for it.
And honestly.
I'm prepared for vote. I didn't say for it.
There, there's no way we can catch up. You got thirty-six miles in that book that needs to be done. I got thirty-four.
There's, uh.
But you can't catch it unless, unless we put, and I'm not saying do the whole thing, I'm saying you could take one-year plan and that, do the first year and hammer out the first year of it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those, you, I don't know about your district, you look at them, some of them, some of them aren't, some of them need to be readjusted, because when they rode out there and looked at roads, they didn't know the roads probably like you knew them, they just go, went down roads. And some of those roads can be moved around, and some of them don't need it as quick now, quick as they say it needs, some of them need it quicker than they say. Some of them are down here on the four-year, four years from now that ought to be up on the front end and switched.
But regardless, it needs to be fixed, right?
And also, if you look at some of them, uh, you can wait several years on some of them.
All right, so, all right, so let's just say the five-year plan, the order's all wrong, but we would all agree that in the five years, those roads need to be hit, right?
What we can, yeah.
All right, but my point is, you can't do it, 'cause you don't have the money.